And other electronic devices. And we'll start out with public comment.
You want to give me a comment first?
Any public comment?
We have a lot of public.
Okay, no public comment then.
I'm Quad Carter. And I'm joining the police board in January.
What would you trust your report, Bob?
No report.
All right.
Wonderful night at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. It was, it seemed like a great turnout.
It was a really good turnout.
Really well done.
Oh, I'll just say, related to that, thank you to Brian and everybody for the setup. It was incredible. Penny?
Darryl.
Darryl. Ann?
Okay, I have a little bit of announcement to make tonight. So I use the mic. I'll just use the microphone. Okay, thanks, man. So he's both happy and sad, but tonight I'm announcing my retirement from the village board. So I'm going to get teary if I look at Rob. So I wanted to just say a few words of thank you and then let you know what I'm doing. And then I have a couple of things that I want for the village, so I'm going to take, you know, a few minutes here, okay? So first of all, thank you to the staff and to, you know, the village trustees. I really have never worked in an organization that was so, now I'm going to get all teary, but that was so good and so well-run and so equal and so open-minded and so thorough and so intelligent. Like, I think you guys should all be so proud and I wish that everyone, I'm not usually this emotional, but I wish that everyone in the village knew how outstanding you guys are. And I wish that people would raise their hand and participate, you know, and so that we have more people who haven't done this before come in. It's really not scary because Rob and Tim and Dave and Brian and everyone make it really manageable to do this workload. So, you know, I cannot thank everyone enough and I can't be more admiring of my peers on the board. So, so that's awesome. Unfortunately, I have this opportunity and I guess I don't feel like I'm as needed here, even though I've really enjoyed it, to go work on the 2020 election. And I'm moving to Miami, which is kind of the hotspot. And I know that we all have different ideas about governance and all that, and I tend to straddle the middle. But I am going to work for a group that trains young people in the swing states so that they can participate and be effective in turning out the vote in the local elections. So I'm really, really excited about that. And, you know, I love mentoring young people. When we have the young people come here, it's always super inspiring. I get inspired by that, so I'm really looking forward to that. There may be some candidates now in the race that I'm very interested in as well, and so that might complicate my agnostic perspective leading through and up to the general. So that's what I'm going to do. You guys are all welcome to come visit me in Miami. I'm going to be in Coconut Grove. And the food is really good down there. And I hear it's a little warmer there in, you know, March and April, so if it gets overwhelming for you guys, happy to host a Winnetka board meeting down there. So then I just, you know, so I don't really have a lot of to add, you know, to the village, but I did have kind of two thoughts as I, as I'm on my way out. And, well, before I get to them, I want to thank Rob and I guess Brian for putting in the charging station. Did everyone notice it?
Yeah.
In the post office park? I mean, like, I'm so proud that that happened so quickly. You know, it was just like, oh, we need a charging station. And I hope that village residents know that it's there and that they start to use it. So, so that was just, like, I noticed that happen. I mean, it's incredible that that happened. So as I go out, I, you know, I love the development that's happening in the village. I don't know if you guys have gone to Tocco. I was there on a night I was supposed to be somewhere else. But it's really great and it's emblematic of all of the great stuff that's happening in the village. And sitting in the restaurant, the owner, Bruno, I gave his number to Rob, I can't send it out to everyone because that would be a violation of the Meetings Act, but he is the way that you make a reservation. His comment was, wow, you know, Winnetka has such a difficult reputation, but it was really so easy to open my business here. I so appreciated everything that everyone brought. They made my plan better. And he's looking forward to wanting to open more things in the village, including an Italian, you know, bakery and also to redo a cafe. So, like, his continued investment in the village will be amazing and he's absolutely thrilled, so proof positive of what we're all experiencing. But I do think that we need to keep pushing on that. And part of that is to be open, and I know I was guilty of this at our last meeting on one Winnetka, of thinking sort of more creatively about alternative kinds of living arrangements for people. And one thing I was surprised about was when I went back out to my, you know, peanut galleries in the village and sort of shared with them what happened at that meeting, everyone was like, well, I don't understand why you veto that because we need more housing, we need more density. There are people, either they're older or they're younger, who want to stay in the community or want to be a part of the community, need less expensive options. And so I don't want to use the word affordable because that has a lot of, you know, but I think alternative is a way to think about it. And so, you know, some of our rules about density are prohibitive of allowing us to get to the kind of activity that we might want to have. So I just, I'm going to throw that out there. I wish I were here to help with the one Winnetka process or whatever it's called in the future because I do think some kind of creative solution could be interesting for the village. And having everything be a super high-priced, you know, condo isn't necessarily the way forward. Okay, so that's that. And that dovetails into the other, which is, you know, Penny, you've been so brave on having the coffees and stuff, but I do feel like since nobody shows up for these meetings, that we're often a little bit, you know, stranded away from what people are really thinking. Like, I was surprised to get that reaction about one Winnetka. And so I wish we had more of a mechanism to include people and what they're thinking and what they want us to do, you know? And so, and I don't know if there's a way to make it like a responsibility of Winnetka citizenship that you have to come to one meeting while you live here in 20 years, you know? But like, if we could just get people to come a little bit, I mean, tonight's going to be uber boring, but, you know, maybe.
He looks at Bob. Well played.
That's why it's right by the holiday. So, yeah, no, I'm kidding. But, yeah, I do think it would be really nice if people would participate more on every level. And so I, that was, those were my two thoughts as I retire. And hopefully you'll let me come back to Winnetka.
Well, I would just like to say, I am happy for the country and you're happy and sad for us because it's a, you've got a great course on board and it's a, it, you know, I mean, that's what I value, have to more, the diversity of thoughts and that's what makes us wonderful. So we'll be sorely missed here for sure. So hopefully it's just a temporary relocation to Miami.
I want to see what happens. It's like the Latin spirit.
But, but to your point about both of those things is that I, you know, one about, about the one Winnetka, I think, you know, I personally react to more to the design. Design just didn't feel very thoughtful, but I think you're absolutely right relative to, I mean, we've lost a lot of our inter-level housing, both for people moving in and for people whose household situations change and then as you're looking to optimize. So I agree with you completely on that one. And on public participation, again, I agree with you and it's the more that we can do to get out, I mean, we have to do this sitting here in the chambers because we have our business meetings that are business meetings in public, but they're not public meetings. You know, their intention is not to sit down and have a chat. And I think we, and I would like to help the council think more about how we can have more sort of forums and stuff that are set up to be conversations, public conversations. Because, you know, the business meetings are not, they're not designed to, you know, be a lot of conversations, but I think you're absolutely right.
Thank you. Good luck, Penny.
Thanks for all your work. And how does February 6th look?
So quick, so quick. Actually, I have to be back up here for the bar mitzvah, so if you want the apartment.
There you go. Good, no worries. Thanks. I'd like to say one of the great things about this process, Andy, you've known it for four years and Penny, you've known it for years and years, is that you may know people casually or you may not know anyone that you end up serving with. And you get to know people, you appreciate the time they put in, the perspectives, and you and I didn't know each other, Ann, but I have really, really appreciate your voice. I may not always agree with you on things, but that's what makes the perspective so good. And the one thing about you and this group generally is, I think, you know, that old saying, you can disagree but not be disagreeable. And I think that's really an important element that you've added to this. I mean, you put your opinions forth, carried the day in many cases, more cases than not probably, and they're good perspectives. And we're going to miss that. I think there's no doubt about it. So I admire you for what you're doing, you know, that's, you know, jumping outside the box a little bit and going and doing it. So I wish you, wish you luck. And I hope we do see you around in Winnetka and I hope we hear your voice, you know, on a local basis.
And Jack, you missed out, but Ann is leaving and she said it's because of you.
I'm next.
I knew it. I apologize, everyone's waiting because of me. I tried to shower. I'm sorry, Ann. I'm sorry you're leaving early.
Yeah, I know, me too. I'm moving to Miami to work on the election.
Oh, that's a bad choice to make in the middle of winter. I can't really understand why you would do that.
I know, I know.
And I would like to thank you. You have brought energy and independence and so often it's been really nice having you here at the table speaking up on important issues. And, you know, I think, you know, to Bob's point, you know, we can disagree but not be disagreeable, but I think we do more than that. I take a lot of pride in the fact that no one here is a bobblehead and yet we find ways to be effective together. And so often you've spoken up about things, whether it's the, you know, the health and welfare of our employees on the garbage issue or, you know, the environment, the charging station and so many other things. And I think what people need to know is that if someone does what you've done, put yourself out there, take the time, come to these meetings, volunteer, it does make a difference. And I think everyone who comes here is deeply committed to that. And I think, you know, hopefully you'll come back future years and you're going to be able to walk around and say, you know, I did that, you know, and I played a role in that. And I have to accuse myself of one Winnetka, but not on the issue of, and I'm not afraid to use the term affordable housing, living in Winnetka is just not affordable. And the lack of housing options is a problem and there's probably a much bigger problem that's Illinois-wide, but I agree with you that we need to be thinking about that and I can assure you that we will certainly be talking about it. Every time we do, we'll, we'll try to channel you.
On a variety of issues.
So thank you.
On behalf of staff serving, we've enjoyed working with you. We'll miss you. We wish you the best. And I think you can, some solace that a lot, as Andy said, a lot of people who've been working together, they've worked since they were transitioned. And I think also with the council, you know, since we've been working together, the staff is committed to community engagement and a lot of our discussions have been around projects and, you know, strategic vision, but there's also a challenge to roll that into your day-to-day business so that it's, you're always gathering that feedback and data from the community so you have a thumb on the pulse of the community. But with the ongoing, with the new comprehensive plan, there's going to be some engagement opportunities I think will be pretty good, whether they're dinners or small focus groups or whatever they are. I think we'll get a lot of good input, so if you're in town while we're doing that, participate.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Good luck. We'll miss you.
And I think Andy gave us a new, our new tagline, we are not bobbleheads.
That was good.
She did not, so that's what we're in touch with.
Well, with that, here we go. Yeah. Well, if you're Bob, what we're about to talk about is like Christmas morning, so. So it's public safety pension update. Tonight, the council will hear its annual update for the public safety pension boards. Finance Director Tim Sloth will provide an overview and then turn the podium over to a representative of each pension board to discuss the year-to-date performance of each fund. Finally, we will discuss the impact of recently enacted pension consolidation litigation. All right, so, Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to bore you. A little background on public safety pensions. Yeah, you should have full slide PowerPoints if you want to take notes or if it's easier to read off of that. Public safety pension, we've had updates on the, the public safety pensions in September of 2017 and then also September of 2018. At the 2017 meeting, we committed to providing ongoing information to the village council, including summary investment reports on a quarterly basis and annual public safety pension check-in study session with commentary from the pension board members. For today's meeting, we're going to go over the current status of the pension funds, year-to-date investment performance and pension consolidation legislation, the legislation that was just First off, how public safety pensions work. First of all, the public safety pensions are guaranteed by law. It's state mandated, we have to have public safety pensions. The basic formula for the pensions is investment earnings plus employee and employer contributions, fund employee retirement benefits. The employee and employer put money aside on a regular basis to pay for retirement benefits. Police officers contributing 9.91% of their salary and firefighters contributing 9.455% of their salary toward the pension. And then the village funds determine them out based on the annual actuary study. So, speaking of the actuary study, there are many assumptions built into the study and cost allocation methods involved to kind of spit out that dollar fund that we need to fund on the annual basis for the property tax levy. And just a couple of examples, in the actuary, they use up-to-date assumptions in regards to mortality. There's a, you know, mortality study every year and we use, you know, the actuary study relied on the most recent up-to-date study in regards to mortality. And also just one kind of item of note, investment returns, whether it's a gain or loss, those are smoothed over five years. So if there's a big, you know, 20% gain in a market in one year, that's going to be smoothed out over five years. Likewise, if there's a 20% loss in any given year, it's going to be smoothed out over five years to determine that actuarial required village contribution. In terms of structure, municipalities are required to establish a pension board for each fund for both the fire and police. And each board consists of five members, two appointed by the village president, two elected from the active fund members and one elected from the fund retirees. Each member must complete 32 hours of initial training followed by 16 hours of annual training. And the major responsibilities of the pension board include managing investments, paying expenses, hiring the actuary, setting the assumed rate of return and making a tax levy recommendation to the village council. And then the village council's major responsibility is to basically fund the pensions at the actuarial level. For investments, the statutory regulations require a minimum of 35% of each fund's assets to be kept in fixed income per state statute. Allowing investments include, again, fixed income, but it's investment grade, U.S. government and corporate bonds, U.S. equity, international equity and real estate. And then specific investments not allowed by Illinois statute are U.S. high yield, fixed income, global fixed income and emerging markets fixed income, and then alternative investments such as private equity and hedge funds, et cetera. In terms of the current status of the funds, Winnetka utilizes a funding target of 100% by December 31st, 2035. Right now, our current funding status as of the most, December 31st, 2018, the police is at 64.8% and fire at 62.7%. So the goal is to get those to 100% funded by December 31st, 2035. This exceeds the state funding target, which is 90% by December 31st, 2040. The assumed rate of return that Winnetka uses in the actuary report is 6.25%. And the North Shore assumed rate of return average is between 6.75% to 7.25%.
Do they, there are different assumptions that are in that rate, right?
Each town will determine they think they can achieve.
Right.
So, for example, I think Lake Forest was the seven and a quarter. I've never quite received a straight answer as to why that is, but it's what they've been using.
When you say offshore, how many towns do you, how many towns?
For this specific is, I think it's about six towns. It's the most, yeah, similarly sized.
Total assets.
I don't have the total asset figures for the, the total towns readily available, but, and that can remove, they can change each year. I know in Northbrook, as recent as two years ago, they were using an assumed rate of return of 8%. And, you know, I've brought that down. So it's, at 6.25%, Winnetka, we're, you know, utilizing a conservative assumption comparatively versus in the state. So, and then the chart shows just recent funding ratios. So in between 2015 and 2017, the fund, we increased the funding ratios from, you know, about 10% for each fund. And then in 2018, it decreased a little bit. And just some relevant performance metrics related to the police and fire pension funds. Market value is between $30 and $31 million for each fund. Again, the assumed rate of return is 6.25%. And then we have the rate of return, this is the actual rate of return as of September 30th, 2019. So the year-to-date is about between 11.3% and 11.6% for each fund. And then the one-year return, so that's September 30th, 2018 to September 30th, 2019, was a 2% return. And then it goes up, you know, at each interval level, three-year, five-year, with a 10-year return of 7.43% and 7.54% for each fund. So exceeding the 6.25% assumed rate of return. Just an item of note, the one-year, there was particular performance in the fourth quarter of last year, particular December 2018. I think the market saw it decrease in that quarter of about 14%, 8% in the last quarter. So that's why that number is significantly lower than the year-to-date. And finally, again, the funding ratio for each fund is in the 60% with a funding target of 100%. The tax levy, the village has made all actuarially recommended tax levy contributions since 1993. For 2019, tax levy year payable in 2020 was higher than what the village has seen in recent years. And this was due to different assumptions within the actuary report, including future mortality estimates, unfavorable plan experience, particularly in December 2018, payroll assumptions and then inactive mortality, which means there was, you know, less deaths than anticipated in an actuary study. So that's a good news.
That is, that is like actuarial. Inactive mortality.
I suffer from that.
We all suffer from it, really.
So as Tim noted, the dollar change for the pensions this year was higher. The year before, Tim, correct my memory, but around $50,000 to $80,000.
Correct. I believe it was closer to 2%, 3% for the last year.
So this was absorbed, we had to make some operating cost adjustments to be able to absorb the pension increase without, so that we didn't end up with a tax levy increase. So those are the kind of trade-offs. So when pensions go up, operations usually have to be, get scaled back. So, in total.
So, Tim, the, that dollar change also reflected the 2018 return.
Yep.
That drove down the funding.
Correct. Correct. But again, that, should be noted that on the actuary basis, that's smoothed over five years.
Correct.
So it's not, it's definitely a part of the hit. It's not, you know, it's, you can't point to it exclusively and say that's the reason that they, you know.
Right, but if we're, if we're tracking that number to get fully funded by 2035.
Yeah.
It does impact more directly each year here going forward.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, we'll go over investment performance. Mary Nine, the investment consultant from Ann Co. was supposed to be here. She had a personal issue come up this afternoon and is unable to make it. John O'Malley, the president of the police pension board, you all know is here. I'm going to review the slides that Mary had included, a brief overview on investments. I'll do my best with that. She was planning to go probably a little bit more detail and thorough, but we'll review it and then turn it over to John for some additional commentary and potentially any questions on investment performance. So this first slide, which is probably very hard to read, but there is a paragraph, basically shows the asset allocation for the fire pension. So we're going to start on the fire pension side. The funds are structured very similarly, so we'll probably take a little more time in the fire and then go a little bit quicker in the police because it's pretty redundant information. But as of September 30th, the fire pension totals $30.1 million. And you can see the allocation, most of it's in U.S. equity, 46%, international equity totaling 11%, and then fixed income at 34.6% right at that 35% minimum. And then they have a little sliver in real estate at 5% and then cash on hand for 2.4%. And then the next chart also shows different information about allocation. And what this is showing is kind of the target allocation based on the investment policy. So each class of assets has a kind of a target allocation. And little gray bars show kind of a minimum, a maximum of those allocations, you know, with the line in the middle kind of basically demonstrating that, you know, the fund is in compliance with the investment policy in terms of asset allocation.
Can I ask a question or are you on?
Sure.
So if we overperformed in equities, we have to have a certain amount in fixed income, it's possible that that fixed amount could drop below the threshold value.
That's correct. So what you, if, on a quarterly basis, the, they meet, and that's actually a frequent topic of conversation, and one that dips below 35%, that they'll have to make decisions to reallocate funds, you know, accordingly, to make sure that we're within that 35% threshold. But that is definitely a frequent conversation, especially as equities have performed well.
Yeah, 11%.
So the investment policy is a specific number. It's not a range.
It's.
There's a target. So you don't need to be adjusting over time. If you say 30, 37, if it drops to 35, you don't have to.
You don't necessarily, yes, for a lot of that classes, you don't have to, but for the fixed income, that is by statute, you're supposed to maintain at least 35%. Now, that's the one that does need to be at a minimum now. If it, you know, like, as of the cutoff of this report, when the line was snapped, it was 34.6%.
That statute is not, if it's state law.
That's a state, state law. And then finally, going over performance, this shows the one-year, the five, three-year, five-year, seven-year and 10-year performance of the fire pension fund and then compares it to a benchmark. So if you look at the 10-year, it's a 7.54% return over 10 years, again, exceeding the 6.25% assumed rate of return, slightly under the benchmark. And then over the last year with that drop in performance, the annual return was 2.21%, which was below the benchmark as well. And then moving on to the police side of the house, again, very similar breakdown, U.S. equity of 41%, international at 14%, so it's a little bit more heavy-weighted in the international sector, with the U.S. fixed income at 35.6%, again, exceeding that minimum level by the state. In private real estate, a little bit more in private real estate at 6.9% and then about 2% in cash. So as of September 30th, a total of $31.29, $31.29 million in assets on hand. And this slide just basically reviews the target allocations, again, with the gray bars being the, the range of those targets and the lines kind of showing, okay, we're, you know, in the middle, in the middle of those ranges and, you know, in line with, you know, where we're supposed to be. So it'd be a concern if we might see one of these lines outside of those ranges. And again.
Can I ask a dumb question? Where, where are the payments, where does it show the outflow to the retirees?
It's not in this report. This is just kind of a snapshot of a, like a balance sheet report. So within like the financial statements, the village's financial payment, you could see where there's, you know, the member contributions and payments made for retirees, that type of thing.
But I guess as a follow-up to that question, I think that, when you have outflow.
Okay, so it's not that much.
When you have outflow.
Hmm.
And it reduces your net asset value. Are you separating it from investment?
We, we keep an operating cash account on hand, but.
You started at 31. You paid out the million in pensions. You adjust that for the investment you've done.
That would not be included on the.
You're at 30, but actually you should be at 34, but you paid.
It's my understanding, these reports are based on the actual investment performance and do not factor in the payments out.
You.
Yes. So it's not netted against, it's not, it's not net inflow or outflow of money into the pension fund. It's strictly the investment performance. And again, the one-year, three-year, five-year, seven-year and 10-year performance, 10-year, the police pension fund is at 7.43%, again, exceeding the. the police pension fund is at seven point four-three percent, again, exceeding the six point two-five percent threshold, or that assumed rate of return. Again, the one-year at two percent, again, due to that fourth drop in fourth quarter. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to President O'Malley to provide additional commentary in regards to the police pension fund, and he can comment, I'm sure, on the fire pension as well.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And then we'll be back to discuss consolidation.
Thank you.
Do you want to put out a specific slide at all or...
No, I'll, I'll make reference to a couple pages.
Okay.
And then maybe you flip back. I have a couple observations related to consolidation where we have some open questions. But some of my focus is how are they different? So our performance is about thirty basis points different. And I was recollecting Ann's comment last year about taking into account some of the University of Chicago Modern Portfolio Theory concepts, and I wanted to sort of cycle back to that a little bit to point out some of the things that we do do.
I need what those concepts are.
I will. And I'll be brief so that everybody's not dying.
So annoying. It's a good thing she's on the board.
Well, they're good points. And as Bob, I know, and as many of us are frustrated trying to read a crystal ball about what's going to happen, we have good data on what has happened, but despite all the incredibly bright people that focus on finance, nobody's really come up with a great crystal ball to point us in the right direction about what's going to happen. So the best we can do is diversify among managers, diversify among strategies, and hope that at least some of them work well for us in any given period of time. Some of the things we can control, and some of the ways that we can choose to operate our investments on a relatively conservative basis, suggest that we interact with the statutes by the state of Illinois as determined, so we have to have a minimum of thirty-five percent in fixed income. Under the new consolidation plan, there is no such minimum requirement. They're free to invest. At least that's the theory, because specific operating rules haven't been yet imposed or determined. So we don't know. There's some pitches that suggest perhaps two percentage points outperformance. I'm really having trouble figuring out exactly how and where that's going to come in and, and whether or not they'll hit their targets. First, I certainly hope they do, because that would be wonderful for all of the members of the, the public in the state as well as employees. The, on one of these pages, within this, on this slide I've got here, I'm on, what is it, page six of, of Tim's handout. We had made a series of relatively conservative judgments. We were one of the first pension funds, both fire and police, they, they somewhat coordinate, but their decision-making is completely independent. We were at one point the lowest in the state in terms of the assumed rate of return. And that got noticed, and then the other municipalities throughout the state started to reduce their rate. But a number of years ago, we took a look at our best expectations going forward, and we thought that something in the sevens was unrealistically high. And at that point in time, we did see even eights and nines. And the result of this is twofold one. It, it calculates the income assumptions going forward in infinity, and it's also the discount rate on the future liabilities. So the bigger that number, the more you assume you got income, and the smaller the expected liabilities. So it hits both sides of the formula. So when we decided to go down, we took almost a ten percent hit to our funding ratio. We didn't lose money. We, the funds that we have to fund these pensions didn't shrink, but it did force our contribution rate up a tad. Also, we chose to target a hundred percent funding rather than ninety percent funding. Pension fund will work just fine at ninety percent, but from a logic standpoint, nobody could figure out what the answer was as to why we should only target ninety percent versus a hundred percent. We know that these are all estimates. We know that all of the assumptions the actuaries make are remarkable, and they compound on one another. So that didn't make a lot of sense for us, and we thought that Winnetka was well-positioned to do a little bit more to establish a stronger base. You can see that our funding ratios look probably lower than you might expect, but I think a memo was recently put together to answer a couple of questions that Trustee Dearborn had that were right on point on what would it look like if we used the similar assumptions to what others are and the funding ratio is in the low seven, low to mid-seventies. And we do keep that in mind, because that's, as trustees, what we really think we know we're at, because we're running this on a relatively conservative basis. Another way, and there is an open question about the shift and how these relatively conservative decisions will affect the consolation, consolidation, and whether or not we will have the opportunity to maintain that relatively conservative funding ratio, or if there will simply be a, a single standard that's applied throughout to the state on all the municipalities. If they change, and everybody uses the same numbers, and they're up at seven and a quarter or something higher even, then you can expect that our contributions, our tax levies, will go relatively down. We just lose a little bit of our decision-making capacity, and we'll have to protect concepts to ensure fairness in the system. And we don't know how that's going to come out yet. It hasn't been determined. Police and fire have chosen relatively conservative managers. They, Modern Portfolio Theory and the University of Chicago Nobel Laureates observed that over a period of time, and that's a key phrase, and it really means it could be well more than twenty or thirty years, there are some premiums associated with smaller investments, with value stocks, and that international markets offer further diversification, but you can have a painful ten or twenty or thirty-year period, as we have had. And it's torture for all of us to look at these returns and compare them to indexes like the S and P 500, which are growth-weighted rather than value-weighted. So our portfolios are in fact value-weighted, and they have some smaller components than some of the major indexes which are currently high-flying. Those are never really happy judgment calls, because there's, no matter what you do, there's always going to be something else that could have been done that could have been higher. But we know that we're looking at liabilities that are going to be fifty years or more in length. Therefore, it suggests that taking the more painful route that is tested and at least to date, shown to be better, is sound. Our, police and fire differ in thirty basis points of return roughly over various periods, and some of that can be attributed to police having a slightly greater international exposure. International has been, on a price-to-equity basis, relatively underpriced compared to domestic stocks. So we said, over time, that will normalize, and it might make sense to have a little bit more exposure. So the painful part is that we were somewhat early. We're also not excited about the last decade of growth stocks trouncing value stocks when we have a lot of value in this portfolio, and it, it doesn't show very well. But if we take a look at some of the studies that some of the biggest-name economists, for whatever they're worth, are suggesting is that we've had such a run of growth, it's about time that the markets are more likely than they were last year to start to switch, and value will come in. We've seen that in the most recent quarter. Smaller-cap value stocks have started to outperform NASDAQ in this last quarter, has outperformed S and P 500, and also outperformed the Dow Jones Industrials. So those are the factors that we work with, and those are some of the ideas that we are concerned about related to the consolidation. The activities of the fire and pension funds are, board acknowledge people who now qualify and discharge obligations to others who have either left and gone to another municipality or have retired. And I, I like the euphemism, but basically, we have really healthy people working and retired from the Winnetka police and fire pensions. Therefore, the pain for those who are funding the pensions is relatively higher, because they live longer, so we keep paying out. So it's a good thing overall, but it's affected how much, you know, when I was first on the pension fund, we were allocating about three hundred and fifty thousand a year to these pensions, and now we're at a million seven. Driven by a series of legislative decisions back in the seventies to allow holidays and changes in benefits, contribution, contribution holidays and changes in benefits. And then somewhere along the line, people realized that the mortality tables they were using were based on people dying in lifespans in the fifties. And if anything, we know from social security and everything else, it's fifties, sixties, seventies, and we've had to change those tables, and now we have our funding ratios relatively lower.
Sure.
John, I was just going to add, another factor that impacted the long-term positions of the pensions were the pension sweeteners that came from the state of Illinois right after nine eleven. And I believe it changed the retirement age by five years. And then there were other retirement benefits for their, for their family that were enhanced, and those were, that was an unfunded mandate that was placed upon municipalities without really a mechanism to recover that cost other than the tax levies. And the non-home rule communities felt it harder than home rule.
So those are big, and that's a trend. Within the state of Illinois, the, somehow, there was a, an amendment to the Constitution preventing any shrinkage. So it is literally impossible for the obligations of a pension fund to shrink by, by the Constitution of the state of Illinois. When they passed the consolidation bill, they substantially increased the benefits to the two-tiered to beneficiaries. So if you take a look at that, you recognize that, hmm, they took care of the concerns of a lot of people who might not have had the same pension benefits. So there are lots of technical reasons why, but the bottom line is, once again, they enhanced benefits. So they keep enhancing benefits, people keep living longer, and it gets more and more We frequently, we write quarterly, we review performance of managers. We're reluctant to change managers, because oftentimes, as you tolerate poor performance from a manager for a long period of time, and you have to dig into whether or not they have a change in personnel, philosophy, have they lost their touch, or are they ignoring what their structure should be? And you have to recognize that if they have a series of bad performance but, years, but you know that they're doing all the right things, if you run out of patience, you often find that the successful periods are those right after you've released them. It is absolutely maddening. I mean, if you go take Morningstar ratings and the four- and five-star funds, they remarkably underperform after they achieve their four- and five-star ratings. You just want to pound your head against the wall trying to anticipate and do the right thing. In October of seventeen, we were very unhappy with the performance of a large-cap growth manager, because large, if you have a large-cap growth manager, they had better be outperforming the growth indices, or at least coming close to it. In fact, they blew it big time. So we replaced them in eighteen, February eighteen. We adjust the caps. We've been reducing our large-cap exposure over the last few years and increasing the small cap and sort of the value tilts, because we figured that after ten years, it's about time to, to shift. And there's a penalty for being slightly early. How early are we going to be? I don't know. And is it a big material shift? Nope. It's tiny tweaking, but it's within the restrictions. It's all we can really do. As we talk about the increase in expected return under state consolidated plans, a big piece of it is explained by no longer having a thirty-five percent requirement in fixed income. That is the largest single component. The other expected components are perhaps alternative investment add-ons, maybe hedge funds, maybe private equity funds. But if we take a look at average returns for either hedge funds or private equity funds, they're not that great in the last decade. So it's really difficult.
But John, that's all the fixed income. The state doesn't dictate the duration.
Uh, no, they don't. Not, not the duration, but they do...
So you could have short-term duration.
Right. Our, our choices go short or long, and, and the type of, we're restricted to investment-grade, no high yield. The state in the consolidated plan will not have that restriction. They will have the ability to participate in high yield in some of the other hybrid securities, which we do not.
What situation? How, how...
It's relatively short, short to mid, under five years. We haven't been paid for carrying longer-term risk, and right now, we're quite, quite happy with that.
It doesn't...
Right. So two, in, in the space of, of zero to five, you, you do get some premiums, but when you're looking at five to ten to fifteen and twenty, you're, you're not compensated for that additional risk. So those are some of the highlights. Any questions? This is your shot.
Real basic questions.
Those are easier to answer. Thank you.
Well, maybe not. So, you know, when we think about policy and what, you know, sometimes it can seem a little bit like...
Throwing darts at a board, like what percentage makes sense? And I think it would be helpful for us to just understand what percentages mean and, and where they fall in a range. So a hundred percent funding, I sort of get the theory of it by 2035. First, let me ask you, do you know if there was a reason 2035 was picked?
Tolerance of taxpayers to fund the remarkable shortfalls that exist throughout the state. You know, I don't understand how a state can, how a decision-maker within a state can mandate a level of benefits and then not similarly mandate with criminal penalties for non-compliance when a municipality chooses not to fund their obligations. I, I don't understand how that's allowed.
Makes sense. Yeah, Winnetka picking 2035.
The rationale for 2035 was just to be at the state...
Does it have anything to do with the social security or... How the state...
No, no ties like that. The concept was, what do we have control over in Winnetka? How do we position ourselves as a village so that people who are here now are paying for the obligations that are being incurred now, rather than pay out obligations or incur obligations today and have people who are going to show up twenty and thirty years from now still on the hook for them? So we're really trying to make sure that the people that are here now are paying for what they're getting.
So when we get to a hundred percent, does anything change?
Yes. The component of our tax levy, which is allocated to making up that shortfall, say, we're at sixty-five percent now, that component goes away. And it is...
How big is that?
And it, it, it's not small. It's, it's material. I can't put a decent percentage on it. At one point, I dig, dig through it. Tim, do you have it? You're wiggling a little bit, but...
Is it like half of it?
I believe it's substantially under half.
Honestly, it is significant. I didn't say that. I don't want to make that...
Is there a percentage funding that if we assume we hit our assumed rate of return to twenty-five percent, there are no more needs to the contribution? What is that percentage?
I mean, if we put a ton of money in it, when do we never have to put another penny in?
I'm just trying to understand what a hundred percent means relative to...
Yeah. In the range of ninety to a hundred percent, you're at an operating range where there's no relevant shortfall.
So we don't have to, we still have big annual contributions, but we're not playing catch-up.
Right. Unless people start living to a hundred and twenty instead of ninety-five.
And at sixty percent or even fifty-five percent, we're not even remotely close to risking default, right?
Not in the slightest. Not at all.
So from a policy standpoint...
It, it really is a question of, you know, the equity of spreading the unpaid past
obligation that we contribute by...
Right. Yeah. And so, and so the, the pension boards both have representatives that are taxpayers and representatives that are beneficiaries. We have never had any material disagreements. The beneficiaries are perfectly fine with whatever we're coming up with within a reasonable range. The taxpayers' representatives on the board were fine with the little tweaks around the edges where we could change a few things to put us in a relatively stronger position.
And then the last question I have, is there a concern though that if we set the funding level too conservative, that we are putting a burden on taxpayers in the state at the expense of other things that are needed in the state? Or even in the village?
Uh, yes, but a hundred, you know, the way the smoothing works within the actuarial tables, as we get to the, the swing between ninety and a hundred is actually quite small. It's not like there's a big cliff and all of a sudden, we don't have to pay that forty percent in. It's not like that. It's going to trickle off so slowly, it will, but as we approach thirty-five versus forty, it's not that material.
I think it's just helpful, because when we think about, you know, what might come out of Springfield and why, frankly, that was a concern I had, is, you know, like, why would they take anything but a conservative approach? And my concern is that someone might view it as an easy way to free up money needed for a state that needs money, but it, it doesn't make that much of a difference.
No, it, it's not, it's not really that material.
Well, I get that, but my, my, Thursday's concept is shifting, right? So, the, the trade would be we raise state income taxes, and the trade-off is we're going to force municipalities to squish down the property tax level.
If we take a look at, at corporations' obligation to fund their pensions, we don't have discussions about whether or not it's okay to be at sixty and seventy percent. That's a crime.
Yeah.
Yeah. A corporation has to fund it.
Yeah.
And it's only in this world where it's not.
Well, the, this, this whole thing, John, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
You know, one of the disappointments of this whole thing is that, when Winnetka's saying, "Oh, it's that we, people like you, Woodmark Fuller and others, who are, you know, professionals in the industry, who are watching this and understand it and so on, and the sixty million dollars is money that the villages put in, employees put in, and it's distorted well over time, and we are now mandated to turn this over to.
Somebody else.
Somebody else. We don't really know who somebody else is, and, you know, in, in the hope and the promise of higher returns, that rightfully so, if it's based on a more, you know, if it's based on the last several, eight years of investment returns in one of the great periods for risky assets, with a fund, I M R F, that has far more flexibility to invest aggressively, more aggressively than we have. So, I agree with you. I think the, the return premium opportunity or expectation is a maybe, maybe not promise. Yes, there could be some expense reduction along the way, so we kind of have to scale it, but this.
In theory.
And that's just the way it is. And, you know, I, in terms of, I don't view this visit tonight as a review of investment returns, say, are you guys have done a good, you know, you're looking at value and you have the fund position in a way that is, is fine, whether it's been a little short in recent years, makes sense given the growth of value and all this stuff. But I think the issue really is what Andy's getting at, and that is policy going forward. And we are not, we're not the determiners of how they invest the money. As pension boards are determining that. We are, however, seat at the table in terms of funding levels and collaborating with you on some of these issues. And I think that presumably, this is going to be passed. We have thirty months. We're not really sure how or when we will be audited, required to turn our assets over. That is not yet determined, but presumably, sometime between, you know, January first and two and a half years.
Two and a half.
And how, so I think we're in a different timeframe that we need to think about now from a policy standpoint.
Trustee Dearborn, would it make sense for Tim to briefly go over the legislation? I know you're really familiar with it, I'm not sure what. It's got a few slides on it, and I think that would segue right into the questions I think you're going to ask.
Before he does that, part of any of these questions would help me a little bit. Go to page eight. You got the fire and police on the bottom, right there. In, in a perfect world, if we were a hundred percent funded, the one point seven million of the two thousand and nineteen tax levy for police, in theory, would be zero, because that would be paid for from the balance.
No, it would be like a million.
Okay.
Because.
Would be the current, the currently incurred obligation for the current employees.
Right. And that, and that's, that's just illustrative. I'm certain of only one thing, that that number's wrong, but it's.
Yeah.
But for conversation purposes.
Right, right, right.
Uh, we, we'd still have to make a material contribution. It doesn't go to zero.
Okay.
Or anything close to it.
The reason I was, you know, the funny thing about this whole a hundred percent thing, it, it, it's kind of based on a fiction that assumes that we cease as a going concern. Right, I mean, that's.
And, and there are no further employees.
Right, we have no further employees, so we fill up and we pay off the, that's what a hundred percent means.
And to put it in perspective, if it were a hundred percent, that one point seven is still going to be seven hundred or a million dollars.
Right, yeah.
It's not, so to get from where we are now to a hundred percent isn't a big yearly difference.
Is that right, John, or would that be covered by the return?
Restate it.
Would the levy be covered?
No, no, for the new employees, new obligation.
If we.
Let's restate the question, because we had a couple of different comments offered.
Well, I'm just thinking about the numbers, if you had a thirty million dollar fund, then you're in six percent, you know, nine eight or whatever. The obligations maybe are a little more than that, but you're going to be pretty close. I mean, that number's going to come way down, I, I would think, but.
Yeah, it depends on longevity of, and claims experience.
Well, to restate the question, maybe, would be, fast forward, we're in twenty thirty-five, we're a hundred percent funded, how does that affect the one point seven million?
Yeah.
It's a guess.
Guesses it would drop by a third between the period from now till twenty thirty-five.
Because you still have, the investments cover, could cover what you're, on an annual basis, but you still have to actuarially determine the liabilities for the next generation.
For the people working today.
So the return won't be high enough to wipe out the future contributions?
So it's kind of a fake number, a hundred percent. Isn't it really a hundred percent?
Well, it's a, it's a hundred percent of the known obligations today.
Right, right.
And, and so, the, in the scenario where Winnetka no longer exists in twenty thirty-five, if we're at a hundred percent, Winnetka no longer exists, so it doesn't have future income coming into the fund. The question is, do the prior employees still exist? If the prior employees still exist, but there are no current employees, then at a hundred percent funding, there should, perhaps, be enough money to pay out those known obligations.
And I'm sorry to mix three things, municipal, state, and federal, but I'm going to, because this is a very long-term policy discussion, so we have this. So I think we need to be thinking about what's motivating people in Springfield, and frankly, just be sensitive and aware that they, there are some pressures there that mean we have to be able to understand, does this level make sense? But I alluded to before, and I do understand that these are not social security eligible employees, but the social security reserve fund runs out in twenty thirty-five, and at that point, current contributions, payroll contributions are only good enough to cover about seventy-nine percent of our annual social security obligation. So, in theory, around twenty thirty-five, there is a need for a much higher federal tax bill. And so, that's a competing reason to pay, maybe we do want to be conservative at municipal level, because the feds are going to be, right now, we got the state coming, later, we got the fed coming.
Can I, can, just a, a Ben question on this? How is it that they, we are mandated by the state to have separate taxing bodies at the municipal level? We're not allowed to combine or to plan with the village, you know, schools or library or anything else. And yet, the state can come in and scoop out and take the funds that we've raised on the local level. How do they, how do they do that from a legal perspective? And is there not a challenge? I know that home rule is not exempted on this, but why, why isn't it? I mean, we were mandated as a separate taxing entity, and now they're vetoing that, basically. They're denying that independence.
So, understand that the const, so legally, the legal framework at the top is obviously the Illinois Constitution. It does call for municipalities, but it primarily leaves up, and other public bodies, it primarily leaves up to the General Assembly the authority to create and to give those public bodies authority, and that's done through the statutes. And so, what happens is, is whether, you know, it's the Illinois Municipal Code, the Illinois Pension Code, the Park District Code, the School Code, you go through all the various statutes, the General Assembly has broad authority to amend those as they see fit and give us power and take away power, so long as it's not within the strictures of, of the Constitution. So, we are the creation of the General Assembly, and what they give us, they can take it away.
But so, so then, in that sense, then, the real estate taxes that we've been levying, because this is from a real estate base tax, that was supposedly oppositional to an income-based tax, which is what the state levies, is really, they've just taken it over. They've appropriated our funds, raised through a different mechanism as state funds.
Just for investment purposes.
For investment purpose only, with each municipal pension fund having its own account.
But, but, and they're, but they're manager. So we, if they lose a bunch of money, it's our liability.
It's the state's, it's all the municipalities that are in, part of that fund, that were, were the ones who.
But presumably, we do not see that.
You do. It, elected representatives, although it's not proportionate. So you're talking about nine members statewide representing six hundred and fifty funds.
Will the state be able to borrow from those funds?
No.
Could they give themselves the power to do that?
They could do it in the future.
Did not see that in this legislation.
Right. And, and there would be other potential legal challenges about the impairment of pension pension.
We're standing with the constitutional provision about that you can't impair the pensions. That's a legal question about what, what they can, what the state General Assembly could do with the funds. If they're going to try to use them for something else besides the payout of the pensions, certainly, there would be, I would assume, massive litigation for the pensioners to protect those funds.
Well, can we do a dipsy-doodle on them and do an impairment of the, of the funds and use that constitutional piece to protect us from having to, to give it over? Can we say that they're hurting the pensions by taking these funds? And, I mean, I think it's, the other.
The harm hasn't occurred yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but when it does occur, I mean.
But under, I mean, I guess I would say, you know, from, from the legal analysis, it's not, there's a whole body of case law about what impairment means under the Constitution. And, and changing the, the way that it's regulated, changing how it's managed, probably, probably would not fall within impairment. You know, so, it would, it's a legal theory, it's something that if we're directed, we can, we can look into, but it's, would be one, I think, that would be, from what I've read of the pension case law, I think it would be a very difficult argument to make.
Let's, I think we're starting to talk about consolidation, and I know that, I don't know that all the board members have a chance to come up with it, Bob's been, or Lee, and we appreciate that a lot, but, Tim, can you briefly go over the consolidation?
And is he's wa, making his way up? And your observation of the shocking number of taxing bodies within the state of Illinois is right on. Very few states in the entire nation have so many, down to the mosquito control issues.
Yeah, we're, we're.
So are those, but this is just municipalities, right?
This is just public.
I mean, they're just, it's just the pension, the board, fire, and, and police.
Yes.
It's just the first wave, though. I mean, you can assume that they're going to do education tax, right?
Well, no, I mean, they've already, they already, they already do education, TR, TRS, they, the state already manages that.
Except for Chicago.
Right.
I am, I am, I don't see any. Well, the, the teachers are funded differently, but I am.
It's one of the state-funded plans.
Yeah, well.
True.
You know, the, the state has a remarkable track of management.
Yes.
Remarkably bad.
Remarkably bad. There's only one funded state. I have no idea that they're going to solve our problems.
How is I M R F?
Well, they're one of the best pension funds in the nation.
It's what, ninety percent funded in aggregate?
It was over ninety percent, then they, they lowered their assumed rate of return, they bumped it down into the eighties, but it's, there'll be backup.
So, before Tim starts, the, and I'm not sure that they've achieved it yet, because we don't know how they're going to promulgate rules, but the idea that came from the Illinois Municipal League was to pursue public safety pension consolidation similar to the I M R F model. So you have your own account, you're not subsidizing anybody else, no one subsidizes us, you have your own percentage that you're going to have to pay, but in terms of getting to the assumed rate of return, we don't know how they're going to frame that yet. I would, based upon what we've heard, we assume it's going to be a number that's higher than, than ours now, just don't know. I'll turn it over to Tim.
Okay. So just to start off, there's some background. On February eleventh, Governor Pritzker announced the creation of the Pension Consolidation Feasibility Task Force with the goal of improving pension funding levels and relieve taxpayer burden. And then on November fourteenth, they went through the, the task force project, they issued a report, and then November fourteenth, the Illinois General Assembly passed pension legislation that has mandated the consolidation of investments of more than six hundred and fifty individual suburban and downstate public safety pension funds into two, one for police and one for fire. At this time, the governor still has not actually signed the legislation, but is expected to do so pretty much any day now.
Basically, everything about the city of Chicago.
Everything about the city of Chicago, yes. The effective date of the legislation is January first, two thousand and twenty. It's the law of the land, it's, consolidation is mandatory. There are no home rule provisions that we can squeeze out of it and, you know, go our own way. It is mandatory for the village of Winnetka. Provides for a thirty-month transition period, which commences on the effective date of the legislation. And initially, they'll create a transition board, no later than one month after the effective date of the legislation, the transitional board will be created. It'll consist of nine members, three from the municipal, we're all three active members, two retirees, and then one from the Illinois Municipal League.
So, Tim, three active members are really the labor representation, three municipal is the management.
Is direct from the villages and the one from the I M L appointed, so.
How are they going to split up between poison fire? Are we going to?
There's, I'm sorry, there's going to be two transition boards, one transition board for each fund. So one, one fund for police, one for fire, and each will have its own transition board. Eventually, they'll have a permanent board, which will have the same makeup as the transition board. The board's going to meet on a quarterly basis, and again, the split is roughly five-four, you know, labor management, but there is a requirement of six trustees for a supermajority for the adaptation of actuarial assumptions and investment-related policies. So anything related to investments in the actuary report will require six votes. And the, the temporary board will serve until the permanent board is in place.
The permanent board will be elected. There'll be some sort of a ballot provision by the members to vote. Don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet, either.
So, some of the things that really affect the village of Winnetka is, again, here, that the local pension fund assets are going to be transferred. The legislation says as soon as practicable, but not later than thirty months. And as part of that transfer, the Department of Insurance, who kind of oversees all the pensions and will be overseeing these funds, is going to do an audit of the investments of each individual fund and determine a certified investment list. And then it says, once they've, you know, done their audit process and have the certified list, they'll transfer that to the pension fund, and within ten days of that list, or as soon as practicable, we are to remit the funds. So, that's how it's written in the legislation. The exact details of this process are still unknown. There hasn't been any formal rules in place, the board's not in place. But it looks like, you know, on paper, you know, we're going to be expected to make a one-time transfer and close out the funds. That provision as soon as practicable, you know, leaves room for play, maybe the board will determine, as soon as practicable is a six-month period, and you can remit certain payments over time, but it's, it's still unknown. The new funds will have sole discretion regarding actuarial assumptions, including the assumed rate of return, amortization periods, and funding targets. So right now, as we stated, ours is six point. So right now, as we stated, ours is 6.25%, 90% funded at 2035. If they pursue a model like IMRF, you know, IMRF uses a 7.25% assumed rate of return, you know, and whatever that, they determine the amortization period, whether it's enrolling or a number of years, you know, if they kick it out to 2050 instead of 2040, I mean, that's, those are going to be functions of the new pension boards, the new pension consolidated investment boards. So what they determine, that's what, you know, our tax levy's going to be appeared. That's what they're going to have an actuarial report prepared, and then we'll determine our tax levy based on those new set of assumptions. So, you know, with Oneeka being conservative, most likely, it's not going to be as conservative as Oneeka, because they're going to have other plans from the 650 other municipalities that are, you know, almost all less conservative than the Oneeka, so presumably, you know, that, that final rate of return's going to be higher, presumably, I can't, I doubt it would be sooner than 2040, I mean, who knows what they'll ultimately decide on, but-
The primary rationale was to provide greater investment authority, and with that, a higher rate of return, using IMRF as a model, so I would not expect it to be as conservative as Oneeka.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it just runs contrary to what they were trying to achieve.
Yes.
Whether they do that or not is-
Yeah, that's still unknown.
So, two questions. Do we have, and have we, towards the 50s, that's, that's that much?
It was in the task force that is lower than Oneeka's, but I do not have that number.
In the 50s.
I believe it was in the 50s, 55.
Sometimes it's very low.
Yeah.
Like 20s.
The task force had a number, we can get that.
Every, every municipality is required by the state of Illinois through the Department of Insurance to submit their actuarial studies, so all that data sits at the Department of Insurance, so that data's there. We just don't have it tonight.
And, you know, there was, you know, ranges were in some of the articles that were in the paper, they were, so.
Yeah, there were some places where there was 10% funding, or lesser, some places in Cook County, it donated $140 as their retirement contribution.
So, unless they're going to determine the amount that we give, that we put in our budget that's going to go into it. Now, this is sort of Trumpian, can we have a second set of books where we decide that we, can we make an additional contribution, or will we be prohibited from doing that? So say they say, we only need to give 1.5 million because the rate of return is now 7.25, and we don't feel comfortable with that because we're pretty sure that they're not going to hit that target, or we like, we're going to continue in our conservative way, can we make an additional 250,000, you know, dollar addition to our fund that year through our tax revenues? Or will they then be dictating that we have to decrease our tax levy in proportion to the amount that we're decreasing in the contribution?
So trustee Wenner, I know in the IMRF model, a municipality has the ability to do that.
We can.
Yes, and so I would think, I mean, we'll have to wait and see, I don't think we would be prohibited from making additional contributions, but it's something we'd want to, you know, determine.
But the thing we should expect is that this isn't going to happen back in, and that the state isn't doing this just for the sake of making our lives and pensions easier. They're going to become a bit more, which, whatever the argument of that, I would suspect is going to happen.
Well, they're legislating more income tax regardless of what happens on this.
Right, but independent of this, I mean, and our, our fund is silent, right, I mean, if nobody else has happened to it, it is ours then.
Yes, so-
I said it's funded at 10%.
But the truth that I can see happening is, we're bringing in property taxes, we're in, and that's the political, I think, that's what we should expect. I feel like this is a prelude, I mean, and I'm not discounting that there are legitimate, well-intentioned reasons for, you know, that a lot of people look at IMRF, but I think a big political calculus is that, and just as a practical matter, we need to be thinking about that. Right now, you know, we may want a more conservative funding level, but our residents are going to get hit, and I just, there's nothing we can do about it, I just think we have to be realistic.
No, I mean, but it's kind of like they might legislate a real estate property tax, ceiling, freeze, right? Like they did in New York for four years.
Yep.
And so, so in terms of budget preparation going forward, right, like, I was thinking we could take an increase this year because we've had too many years of not taking an increase, but, but we're not going to, probably, we may not have access to having an increase in future years, right? I mean, that could be what the, right, and so the, the give me is, we get the fake, which has destroyed the state pensions, the fake assumed rate of return, that means that you're just underfunding your pension obligation.
And going back to your second set of books, not necessarily that, but how, how can we monitor the what-if of not a second set of books, just a different analysis?
Sure.
To make sure, to see if we want to put more money in. I'm assuming that'll be part of the review.
If it's modeled-
A lot of it's going to be used in total to impose more tax.
Correct.
Correct. So we may, we have to actually think about that.
Right, right.
So-
Let me, let me just understand, it is ringback.
Excuse me?
It's, our liabilities are, our liabilities, our investment incomes, our investment income.
That is-
So it is, it, it's no change except investment decisions and consolidation of, but it is-
Yeah, we lose, we lose control of the assumptions, the pension boards, the local pension boards lose control of the assumptions used in the actuary report, and they lose, you know, the actual control of deciding, you know, which investments to invest in. So there will be a consolidated board that governs the investments, and then, as it's written, the legislative provisions, you know, are written so that, to prevent, you know, the healthier pension funds from subsidizing the less healthy. And the task force, you know, did utilize IMRF as an example, and the way IMRF works is there's, you know, a giant actuary report for the fund as a whole, and then every year, we're provided, you know, a subset actuary report specific to our percentage of the IMRF fund. So that's how it's separated. And then every year, the way the formula works for IMRF, it's based on an employee contribution versus a direct tax, so that's why we don't have a direct tax levy for IMRF, whereas we do have a specific tax levy for, you know, the public safety pension funds. So every year, you know, we get a rate from IMRF that says, okay, this year, your rate is 14%, and you have to, you know, on top of your salary for your employees, you have to add 14% as your contribution towards the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. One year goes by, they look at the investment performance, they say, your rate this year is 13.5%, and that's specific to Oneeka. You know, Deerfield or, you know, Glanco, right next door, they have a completely different rate. I don't know offhand what their rate is, it might be a percent higher or lower, but it can be, you know, from what I've seen, swings as high as 3% or 4% between municipalities, up or down, based on that actuarial report. So the funds are all co-mingled, and that's how they basically separate the contributions. They'll say, all right, your rate this year is this amount, and I assume there'll be some mechanism similar to that, and we might decide, you know, we'll fund that differently than our property tax. There might be, you know, going forward, you know, that will be decisions on exactly how to do it. Will we tie that number directly to our tax levy, or will we just levy and haul and contribute a different way?
So then will communities have a choice to not make contributions or to make little contributions?
So it, they, so right now, that's one, the legislation that they have in effect where the state, if, if a community does not make their contributions, they can withhold income tax, sales tax revenue, and, you know, contribute that directly to the pension fund. So if community-
How do guys with 10% funding benefit from the consolidation? So the rural, the poor guy who's got no money in his fund?
Yeah.
And he's got, you know, 25 firemen or something like that, how do they benefit from the structure?
I would, I would suspect it depends on why they're at 10%. I mean, if it's 10% just because the community is, you know, poor and not, you know, I'm not sure exactly how they're going to benefit, but if it's from mismanagement of the fund, wasteful spending on other projects versus, you know, properly funding, then they're going to benefit because there will be a mechanism in place to force that contribution, force that funding.
But if you're, if you're in a town where, I mean, again, I go back to either, I think it was Markham, where there's 10% funding, and they, they haven't taken money in years to fund their pensions, and they have, like, 45 policemen on the pension, and, and again, it was crooked at the time, you know, they had, everybody's cousin and their cousin's brother was, had been put onto the police department, given a pension.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of waste built into that system, but now they've got this giant, you know, they've got 45 people who need to get pensioned. This gets back to Andy's point of, when do they come to fix that problem? And where's the money going to come from? They, they won't be able to tax the citizens of Markham to fully fund or even to get to a reasonable percentage of income tax, there'll never be the money there.
It's-
No, I mean, I'm just saying, here, here we are losing our control over our funds.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess I would, there's kind of, I want to be here about two separate issues. One is about efficiency of how it's managed, and small funds with small amount of assets have a hard time getting the exposure to the, be able to the investments and the investment managers and so forth. The separate issue is what happens when a municipality does not pay? So there is, in the, you know, there are rules about that, and the state law mandates that the state can step in and they can sequester funds and force payment. Now, when there's no payments to be forced, it's a kind, that's a whole nother problem, right? But, so right now, if you are a municipality that just simply says, when you get your numbers, I'm just not going to fund, I'm not going to write a check, stinks to be a police officer, and we're going to take the money easy for their things, there's state money that the municipality would otherwise get, that the state will not turn over, and it goes to start paying some of that required payments. Now, it's another problem entirely if you're a municipality that has no income or next to no income, and you're never going to be able to catch up, and then you're looking at municipalities that, while they can't declare bankruptcy in Illinois, or effectively just default on everything, and it becomes, there's no city services, it's a real problem, and, and that, you know, and that's where we sit today with certain communities.
Harvey.
So, you know, what will happen with those as the situation worsens, if it does in the state? There'll be more of those municipalities, and there may be additional legislation to address some of this, but this legislation really isn't geared towards how do we claw back from a community that refuses to pay? That's not really what it's focused on, it's instead about the economies of scale and the thought of, you know, if you're a small town, and you have a pension fund assets of a million dollars, not 30 million, how can you have the efficiencies to, you know, to boost? If we all pool together and you have fund managers, you know, that are looking at billions of dollars of assets, you might get some economies of scale.
Yeah, but it's only a couple points difference, I mean, it's not going to solve their problem.
Right, no. Right, right.
Right, if there's, there's really, if they had to sequester, there's really three funding sources. One is the local government distributed fund that we get on a per capita basis, because municipalities, as part of the 1970 Constitution, we can't levy an income tax, so the income tax collected by the state of Illinois, there's a percentage that comes back to municipalities. Whatever sales tax provision they have is collected by the state and then remitted, the state could always hold that back, and then there's MFT funding that's based upon your population as well.
But I'll, but I'll let them cycle ahead.
Yeah, no, that, that's really, those are the, those are the main funding sources from the state of Illinois that come back to municipalities. So those, that's how they could possibly do it.
This chapter is not starting to be written, and we can think about how it's going to develop and so on, and if we can Google it and we're not, who knows?
Because if they have to go to another route to get their money from holding the other taxes, well, that's just going to hurt the municipality even more by not having those other taxes.
It's a dominoes.
Yeah, right.
But I think we need to just think about, well, number one here.
Of course.
In Oneeka, and, and he was getting to it, I think, with policy going forward, you know, if there is discretion on our funding, you know, do we still want to look at this 2035 figure, or will we just fold in to a 7% actuarial rate, and our funding source goes from 66 to 71, and we'll be 90% funded by 2040, and we'll be paying a million and a half thousand instead of 2 million in the funds a year? You know, we may just want to say peace, that's fine, but I also think that we need to think about the next, sort of the sundowning period for these plans. And I think, John, that lies really in your area and the other fund as well, but, you know, we could be called, as Tim mentioned, it could be six months, nine months, one year, you know, and the investment approach of value-oriented, I subscribe to that, I subscribe to active management, I think it's all fine, well, but, but it has sort of a, as you mentioned, sometimes doesn't play out for 10, 15, 20 years.
We've paid the price.
You know, and maybe it's going to turn, but the reality is here, your group should probably be thinking about whether or not, given the fact that we now have a short-term timeframe on this fund, whether we want to think about maybe a little bit different approach to the management of that timeframe, you know, I asked Tim what our expense ratio was for the, for the plans, it's about, including consultants, it's about 60 basis points or whatever. Probably restructure these, just, again, not by a holding pattern, along your asset allocation guidelines, where do you want to be in funds that, you know, you may not have the active managers, where you're paying the full price because you don't want to make this be, well, maybe full for a long time on that or what have you. And so, you know, it just seems to me that we should be taking in the near term, a real fresh look at how we're doing this, can we save some expenses, can we get the funds positioned where the transition is kind of seamless, and still maintain, you know, a good solid investment approach, consistent with whether it's value-oriented, you know, get the international in there, what have you, in just a different, a different way in the meantime. And then I think that, you know, whether we, whether you're interested in our input on that, it's up to you, but I think it does play into what our, you know, how we're doing the contributions going forward on this, and, you know, I was a real proponent of 2035, and my guess is part of that came out of, I don't know, we're here to happen, but it was probably a reaction to a terrible market, maybe it was a great recession, I'm not sure, people were like, oh my God, we're, you know, 45% funded or whatever, we have got to get, you know, Oneeka, we've got to get this on a route, and we've got it on a route right now, so we don't have to be a slave of that route, I think, going forward.
There, prior to the most recent pension check-ins, when I first got here, there were some pretty serious discussions about pensions, given, you know, the recession. And I think coming out of the recession is when we were really talking about that lowered rate of return, and then actually, there, the council at one point was thinking about over-contributing at a certain point, but-
They did it back.
Yeah, there was a couple, I know in our change in fiscal year, we did over-fund beyond the actuarial determined amount, but it's-
So are you suggesting that the investment policy or the asset allocation should be tweaked with a three-year numberized or rather than-
No, I'd keep the, I'd just keep the allocation, I'd have the pension boards continue to position the fund, you know, across asset classes the way they want to do it, but there may be a way here, others take the Vanguard funds as the classic low-cost funds, I mean, there may be value funds in there or international funds, that the boards at this point would say-
That's a cost issue, not a radiation issue. So I missed the point.
And also, it's a transition issue.
That you said we have to adjust the, our view in 20-
No, I'm not saying, I would keep the, I would stay in line with policy, I'd stay in line with the guidelines, I would just look at the investments and say, we know that these funds are going to be transitioned and liquidated in a relatively short period of time. And, you know, we may subscribe to the active manager, the value manager, what have you, or fixed income manager that has individual bonds, we may subscribe to their long-term approach, but we don't have a long-term anymore on these funds. And so I'm just suggesting that the boards think about this right now, because, one, it might save, in the near term, it might save some expense for the funds, and, and two, it will position them to be transitioned and maybe in a more seamless way. And so, you know, I don't, we're not in a position to tell you how to do this, but I think that if we now have a different timeframe, we know that, we're going to know that, we don't even know what the timeframe is, we just know it's going to be short, I mean, two years. short, I mean, two years in the investment world is a blink, and so, anything can happen, and I would suggest that, and then I think, I think the council, you know, if there's, in my mind, there is some kind of a risk, it's a backdoor risk or whatever, that these funds, you know, get used in some way or whatever, maybe not a hundred percent to our benefit, and I may not, personally, I wouldn't be as much a subscriber of the hundred percent by two thousand thirty-five, I might just say, get in line with the rest of the world and we'll deal with it as it comes. So I, I think that's in our court.
Yeah.
When it gets all flushed out, but in your court, I really, it's time to think, you know, in your next meeting or whatever, just get this idea going about.
Yeah, we can probably say twenty-three basis points for it.
Right. You don't need to do so complicated.
Right, I thought you were talking about, like, taking a big chunk of money to the track and betting it on surprises in the short term.
That's what the state people are going to do.
Buttercup.
I didn't explain myself.
I just don't know why we.
Seeing both sides, so if we end up having a recession in two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one, if we have switched to, say, in low-cost index, then we will be in a position where we have paid price for protection we terminated, which would have gotten us several percentage.
Though I think you could find the funds within the, within, within the family of low-cost funds, I think you could find, and again, I'm not a proponent of those funds, but you could, you could find a good value fund that might get you to that same protective position.
Well, well, or is there an active management perspective? I know you can't perfectly market time, but just put it all in cash, take it all out and have it in cash.
Yeah, you could do that, but we don't know in fact what the, the, we tend to.
Right.
So we actually, just like a trustee who is a trustee of a family when somebody dies, they're responsible for performing as the reasonable, reasonable group manager, does look at alternatives as you're describing, but.
Well, well, there'd be.
Their reasonable group manager often get hurt by going to cash or interest.
Yeah, I know.
I think you've got to keep, got to keep your, the, the, the investment approach per the guidelines going forward, I just think there's a, we, we're in a different world timeframe right now on that.
But so, but it's, it's always a balance, but it's just sort of, your priorities are a little.
I, I think, I think they are, anyway.
But, but if there's a market turn-down at the moment that you have to liquidate your funds to change to another manager, is there an appeal process that we can go through to say, you know, we can't change right now because it means that we'll have to realize loss of twenty-five percent of our fund, right? I mean, you could see a scenario where you're, because in twenty twenty-one, you're deep in the recession by then, right? I mean, that's, seems like the market.
Probably the way this will work out is, is they will have this fund up and running from an investment management standpoint, and so, let's say we go in and we have sixty-five percent of our assets in risky assets, stocks, real estate, what have you, when it goes over, if the market's down, we'll be down, they'll be down, we'll be investing in assets that are down in price, I mean, I think.
But we'll have to sell our assets to realize the loss?
They're just going to take them, and they're.
Or they'll just take them.
The only, the only.
They'll just transfer.
The only situation I see where we could be on it is we're at forty-five percent equity, and let's say in three years' time, equities were down twenty-five percent, but the state has a twenty-five percent equity allocation, so we sell our forty-five percent, we give them to the twenty-five percent of theirs.
Right, and then we're dead.
And then we're up twenty percent if the market comes back.
Right.
That's the only, but I don't know what the state asset allocation is for, and it probably can't be any different when it, when it rolls in. But you're right, there is that, you know, when you roll in and then probably the long time.
So, has everybody's.
I think we should probably mirror as much as we can in the coming sixty months, get closer to mirroring the state.
He's probably going to go.
So has everyone's pension itch been scratched? Are we studied up on this?
Yeah.
Any, any other comments or questions?
I would say this only, Tim, keep us posted as we learn.
We will.
More about this transition, and John, you and the other board, keep us posted on your thoughts on this.
What's the goal going to be for the boards? Will there be, will we have local boards?
We will have local boards, because there will have to be pension determinations upon retirement, there'll be disabilities, when someone passes away, all that has to get cleaned up.
So all the, all the.
Yeah, so, at one point, and not to belabor it, Illinois Municipal League's legislative priority was to take the whole thing like an IM, like IMRF, but during the course of negotiations with Labor, it was only pooled for investment, they, IML had laid out like three different scenarios, and this is the one where they settled on. And actually, I think that's the best-case scenario at this point, is maintain some local influence, so.
So I think it's all just a bit short, they're all, oh, yeah, the IML will simplify management.
If it's not satisfied for now, they just don't make an official.
All for the audience, public comment, and, you know, the council discussion. John, Tim, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate it.
And it was definitely not a war.
It wasn't war.
Please, but please don't come back. Just kidding. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye. All right. So sad.
So, so this is it?
Yeah.
Well, Chris said maybe I could.